Okay, so we are live according to Sam. Just wanted to check in real quick with Johanna and Jake to make sure everything else is a go.
Yes, I'm ready.
And here too.
All right, have we opened up the entire waiting room to bring them in?
So we don't do that anymore. As people join the Zoom webinar, they just fly in as an attendee.
Gotcha, perfect, thank you very much Jake. So it appears that we are ready to move forward. Today is March 23rd, 2021, and it's 9:01 a.m. And this is the Board of Supervisors for Lake County Regular Meeting. And let's go ahead and rise for a moment of silence. As we all know, yesterday, a tragic incident happened in Boulder, Colorado. A police officer was shot down, as well as nine other people who have families, friends, and people who love them. There's a lot of hurt out there, and so let's make sure to take care of each other and hold everybody in our thoughts. Supervisor Simon, would you like to lead us in the Pledge Allegiance, please?
The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Moving on to item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Is there any extra items from board members or staff? And hearing none?
Mr. Chair, there are none today.
Okay, hearing of none. Let's go ahead and move on to item number five, approval of the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member wishes to pull for further discussion? Okay. Jake, if we can pull the Zoom room, and in the Zoom room Jake will go ahead and provide some direction on how it is that you can raise your hand, so that you can go ahead and pull an item or provide public input.
All right, so all participants in the Zoom room, if you click or if you look at the bottom of the screen, you'll see raise hand, please raise your hand if you are interested in speaking. Phone participants, you may dial *9 to raise your hand.
And again, this is if you wish to pull an item from the consent agenda. Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda 5.1 through 5.5.
No second.
We have a motion and a second. Johanna, if we could please have roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Salatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, our timed items. Oh, we're not quite at 9:05 a.m. Let's see, I don't believe there's anything very small here. Now that everything's timed, that's right. So we're just gonna have to take a quick one-minute break until our, let's go ahead and start with our weekly calendars, let's make that happen. And so let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, so board meeting today, afterwards, I don't have anything on the calendar for later this afternoon. Gonna follow up on the event that's happening this week, our broombuster event. So just a couple of follow-up items for our 27th event we're having down in Middletown, Sangrenta Creek, so follow up on that. Tomorrow have the Economic Development Task Force meeting in the morning, and the afternoon have a discussion with Carol and Jessica about the RRA, or JPA, some of the changes and other things we're moving along. Don't have anything on the calendar for Thursday. On Friday have the LTA Executive Committee meeting. Yeah, no meeting next week, so I have a Blue Ribbon Committee on Thursday, the first, and we'll be back here, obviously have Easter, which will enjoy that on Sunday, the fourth, and then back here for the meeting on Tuesday, the sixth. Have a meeting with Carol on Monday, the fifth.
Perfect, thank you. Supervisor Scott?
Yes, tomorrow I have from 9:00 to 11:00 the Lakeport Rec meeting. At 11 o'clock, I have a meeting with Wellville. At 12:30 to 2:00, more interviews for our ED. From 2:00 to 4:30, I will have the first five commission meeting. On Thursday, at 9:00, Hope Rising Governing Board meeting. And then in the afternoon, meeting with the Executive Board of Hope Rising. And then Seraptus meeting in the evening. And then on Friday, I'm meeting a constituent in my office. Next week is spring break, so I'm trying to take that week off, so we'll see how that works. But last night, for part of a report, we had our Scotts Valley Advisory Committee meeting, and we decided we had a presentation about firewise communities, so we're really getting excited about that. And so if anybody would like to, if they live in the Scotts Valley area, want to be a part of a firewise community, please give me a call, 849-4414. We're just in the planning stages, but they seemed pretty excited about it yesterday, so.
Awesome.
Good to get people on board.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pisca?
It's so exciting, more firewise neighborhoods, especially in Scotts Valley, that's awesome. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with Moke and Carol to talk about the Risk Reduction Authority. I have Cavern check-in in the evening. Thursday, the Hope Rising Governing Board meeting. And then super orientation, my last orientation with the Ag Commissioner. Friday, I have a meeting with Calpine. In the evening is the Women of the Year Award Ceremony with Mike Thompson, which our CAO is receiving an award, and Crystal Martin is receiving an award from Women of the Year last year. And also, the Woman of the Year from Sonoma County, it's a Middletown graduate that went to school with me and Moke, Supervisor Simon. So I'm very excited that all three of those women are being recognized. And then I'm gonna be taking spring break off with my family.
Awesome, thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, today, I have to meet with the auditors about ceremonies. I've never done one, and I've been asked, so I want to make sure I know how to do that. Tomorrow, I have something set up, I'm gonna double-check. I was supposed to have a meeting last week, but I had to push it back, so it's a constituent meeting. Thursday, I have a CSAC class, and I think there's a PG&E North Coast Regional Working Group that's, I don't know what that is, I have it on my calendar, I'm not sure if you guys know what it is. No? All right. Friday, I have a couple appointments next week. Tuesday, I think we set something up, Bruno, but I'm not sure exactly what it is, because I don't have the calendar invite, Andy. But I know we talked about something next Tuesday, in one of the meetings we recently had.
Yeah, and I'm sure we'll be getting an invitation for that soon.
Right. And so, back on the 5th, so after Easter, of course, there'll be the Middle Creek Restoration Meeting, and back here Tuesday, I also wanted to note, we had our, we've also had our Town Council meetings where there was discussion about firewise communities as well. Laurel Bard comes from, you know.
Civic Sparks?
Yes, Civic Sparks, and she comes and talks, she's been coming and talking to them. So it's been a really, really good discussions there, the same as Tina's been mentioning. And then Moke and I attended and made comments to the Board of Forestry yesterday with the letter that we provided last week. They still voted against it, so we're gonna, of course, make our comment and oppose it the best we can, and anyone in the community can make comment about that as well. And it's a very interesting situation, but we'll get there. I don't know if Moke had a really good statement, he went first. I couldn't figure it out, so I couldn't get in and kind of interrupted our other meeting that we were having, so I finally got in and got a comment in though, so. It was 22 supervisors came and made comments, so it went pretty good, even though we didn't get the result we wanted, so.
Yeah, just follow up on that, you know, obviously, all the comments are the same as we were, you know, to slow it down, obviously, give us some more time for direct consultation with the counties, you know, the boots on the ground, they're gonna be doing it. So they did, you know, decide to move forward with the 45-day comment period, and, you know, we all, we'll continue to work with the Board of Forestry and get those comments in, really try and work on an issue that is not only near and dear to our hearts here in Lake County, but all northern counties spoke up the detrimental effect it could have on us. So there's a question, please reach out to myself or EJ, but we are gonna continue to push that and make sure that we're in the working groups, they're gonna be discussing these comments going forward.
Thank you very much for your updates, I appreciate that, since we talked about you both going to represent the county, so thank you very much for doing so. And that was it Supervisor Crandall?
That's all I have until?
Okay, I'm sure you'll have more things come as the days come and go. Looks like tomorrow there's EDTF meeting, a CC4C meeting, and then a Lake County Fire Protection District meeting that I will be attending the following day. I'm gonna be going out to a new property that has been purchased through the tax sale to get some ideas of what possibly could happen. It's off of on Highway 20, a portion of that property is in Supervisor Crandall's district, and the other portion on the other side of Highway 20 is in District 2. Later on that day, CSAC called to get more updates. Mainly the updates lately are about the vaccine deployment and not much more. Let's see, looks like Friday, I don't have anything scheduled quite yet. On the 29th, looks like I'll be spending the majority of my day in a CPUC meeting on PG&E, PSPS, and upcoming changes, and also potential policy changes at the CPUC level. Let's see, what else do I have here? I'm gonna be joining a meeting for a Latinos United of Lake County later on that evening or afternoon, as well as a CSAC meeting again later on that evening. On Tuesday, I'm sure that's gonna get filled up, since that's no longer a special meeting. Another CC4C meeting I'll be able to attend on Wednesday. And just not much going on until Thursday, there's a City Council meeting that I'll be attending for the city of Clear Lake. And back here on Monday to do our Middle Creek Restoration Project meeting, Monday, the 5th that is, and then meeting with our CAO, and I'm sure sometime in between all that, we'll be doing agenda review for the 6th. And that is my, I do wanna just to report out, I'm working right now with BLM and Calfire. We had talked about doing a fire break expansion with vegetation removal just above the landfill to the east of the city of Clear Lake. There seems to have been some new occurrences of realizing that we missed some steps. And so Calfire is requesting that we look at SEQA and how it is that we can get approved through the SEQA process. Unfortunately, the SEQA process takes some time, so I do have a clerk, as of this morning, is looking into it to see if maybe some of their materials can help us cover the SEQA process. But if worse comes to worse, and we're not able to do that project this year, which I'm highly disappointed about, they would move all of their workers that were planned for this project to the Black Forest area to do a lot of vegetation clearing in that region of the county, which is also a very high fire-threat area that we all are very concerned about. So at the very least, Lake County's gonna have some fire suppression activities going on before May, and it'll be a matter of where that fire suppression is done. And that is it for me, and so let's go ahead and move on back to item 6.2, or 9:06 a.m., consideration of update on COVID-19, and I see that we have Dr. Pace with us today.
Did we miss public input?
I did miss public input, I'm sorry, Dr. Pace, if you could just hold for one second. Item 6.1, 9:05 a.m. item, public input. This is for anyone that has any comments to make that is not related to any of our agenda items, you would have three minutes. Please raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, press *9. And Jake, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see any hands at this moment that is raised, and so we will go ahead and move on.
That is correct.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now item 6.2, 9:06 a.m., consideration of update of COVID-19. I apologize, Dr. Pace, this time it's your turn.
No problem, thank you and good morning, everybody. So we'll be doing the COVID response update here for Lake County, and I'll try to be brief this morning. So we're continuing to see improvements in the case counts and just the general infection rate throughout the county. We are doing well with the vaccine rollout. We now have approximately 30% of the community that is 16 years old and older has gotten at least one dose of the vaccine, so we're almost a third of the eligible, not even eligible people, but the people that could get it eventually are, have at least got the first dose. And we moved into the red tier last week, last Wednesday, and will need to be in the red tier for at least three weeks before we can move to the orange tier, but things are all looking pretty good right now. So maybe we'll have Sarah do the data, and then I'll go ahead and dive in a little deeper on some of these things.
Good morning. I have a brief update, what we're seeing at the state level and here in Lake County. At the state level, testing continues to decline, but the rate of decline has slowed. On the right, we can see that the testing positivity, the seven-day average at the state level is 1.7%, which is the lowest that it has been since the beginning of the pandemic. And this dropped rapidly over the last couple of months, but is beginning to slow down as well. Over 3.5 million cases have been identified to date in Lake County, and the seven-day average continues to decline, but the rate of change is beginning to slow as well. And over 56,000 people have died of COVID since the beginning of the pandemic. Like Dr. Pace said, been fairly stable the last couple of weeks. So the week of February 28th that we have here in red is, was the week that was our tier determination last week that moved us into the red tier on Wednesday. And this week here, the week of March 7th, is the week that will make up our tier determination today at about noon when it's announced. So we expect to have metrics that keep us solidly within the red tier. And then I'm showing in gray here for the week of March 14th, the week that just finished, we've identified about 29 cases to date, so I would expect for next week as well, when the state runs the metrics, we'll have metrics solidly in the red tier again, at about 30 cases per week. And so the official announcement will be later today, but what we expect is based on data from March 7th to the 13th, our daily case rate will be about 6.6 per 100,000, and our testing positivity about 4.2%. And this is the map that describes the tier assignments as of last week. So this map will be updated today, and you can see, at least from last week, nearly 88% of the state's population was living in a county with substantial transmission or in a red tier. Like Dr. Pace said, about 30% of people 16 years of age or older in Lake County are at least partially vaccinated. So to break that down, about 12% of people are partially vaccinated, that's about 6,500 people, and about 18% of people are fully vaccinated, and that's about 9,200 people. These data are from the California Immunization Registry, and like we've discussed previously, that system doesn't talk or integrate with the system through which tribal health administers doses. So if we bring in data that we received, that was shared with us last week, that looked at doses administered by tribal health, I think our indicator of vaccination coverage is actually closer to about 33% of the population 16 years of age or older, when we bring in the work that tribal health has done to vaccinate people in the county. And wanted to give a quick update on progress by age group. So draw your attention to the yellow column here, 62% of people 75 years of age and older are at least partially vaccinated, and about 57% of people 65 to 74. And then what I've indicated in this column on the right is to show our progress since our last update. So since March 15th, there's been a 13% increase in vaccinating people 75 years of age and older, and 21% increase in people 65 to 74. And what I'll draw your attention to is really this age group, 55 to 64, who in many ways were newly eligible, so a lot of focus, or we can see interest in people 45 to 64, the greatest percent change in vaccines received over the last week among that age group. And then looking at our progress by race ethnicity, about 20% of white non-Hispanics in the county are at least partially vaccinated, about 19% of Latinos, about 15% of Native Americans, according to the California Immunization Registry data. Again, that is not including doses administered by tribal health, so we know that this number is actually higher based on their work. And then we have a large percentage, a large number of people who identify as multiracial non-Hispanic residents, about 2,400 people have received at least one dose. And we're seeing across counties in California that there is a large number, a larger number of people who identify as multiracial non-Hispanic who've received at least one dose than what the population estimate is. And so this is common across counties, and it's just based off of people, how people are self-identifying when they receive their dose. And then lastly, just want to report an update on progress by the Healthy Places Index. As you may recall, the state has set a goal of focusing on communities with the least healthy community conditions defined by this Healthy Places Index to prioritize vaccines in those communities, either because people are at higher risk for exposure, or higher risk for severe illness or death. And in Lake County, in the Healthy Places Index Quartile 1, which is, represents some of the least healthy community conditions, where about 44% of the population lives, about 5,100 people have been at least partially vaccinated. And in HPI 2, about 10,200 people have been partially, at least partially vaccinated. So still about 33% happening in HPI 1, which is not on par with the population in those communities, so there's still work to be done there. But I think some positive news, I looked over the last two weeks, the percent change since March 8th, so there had, this is showing that there has been a concerted effort and increase in people in these zip codes receiving the vaccine. So we'll continue to track these and report these data, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So a couple of things just to highlight there is our case rate, 6.6 per 100,000, which is in the red tier. It will still be in the red tier, even if we get to the 4 million mark of vaccines in the lowest quartile around the state, which is, when that happens, they're gonna readjust the threshold between the red tier and the orange tier. So I'm assuming that's gonna happen within the next couple of weeks, and very likely we will be in, we will be in that tier for a couple of weeks. So, you know, I still think we're three to four weeks out before thinking about the orange tier, but we didn't see a whole lot of improvement this last week in case rates and positivity. In fact, it sort of regressed a little bit, but we'll see how that goes. So mainly want to talk about the vaccines today, that's the biggest issue at this point. And so we're continuing to see good progress, as you can see from the data that Sarah gave. The inventory is quite good now. We are actually seeing a decrease in demand based on our supply, so we're not filling all our appointments right now. And certainly part of that is because we've been having to switch around with the appointment scheduling process, and it's been very confusing to the public. And hopefully, we are going to see some real improvements here in the next week or so. So the third-party agreement contract, or the MOU with the state and the county, has been signed, there was a discussion last week in the board meeting about that, that got signed. And so now that the Blue Shield is supposed to be working with us about setting up a transition plan, and we're hoping to see that within the coming days. This transition to MyTurn, MyTurn is the appointment platform and the data platform. We started using it yesterday, it's been a real struggle to try to get all the pieces in line, but we started yesterday, and there's a fair amount of bumps in the road, but we are on it now, and so we should be on it moving forward. So people now scheduling appointments, will do it through the MyTurn website or through the MyTurn phone line that they have, and you can get that at myturn.ca.gov, or you can find it on our website. So the appointments have just been a bit of an issue, and we're trying to work on our messaging out to the public so that people are aware on how to do it. If people have feedback on why people are not signing up for the appointments, why, you know, is it because the demand is saturated, which is one possibility, and we're trying now to work with the state to let us loosen up the eligibility criteria so that we can start using, I'm sort of thinking maybe from 50 and above, we might be able to open it up to that, but the state's not letting, the state says we can do it, but the computer won't allow us to do it, so we're trying to work on that. So hopefully, within the next couple of days, we might be able to loosen up the criteria so more people can get vaccinated. But it also seems like some people are just not aware on how to make appointments or where to get vaccine, and so we're trying to work on our messaging campaign around that as well. But at this point, we're doing the press releases, we're trying to do discussions in various ways with the, through Facebook and different things like that, but I think we're gonna have to try to reach out more ways to let people know that vaccines are available, if they're eligible, this is how you make appointments, and if you can't make an appointment that way, this is how you can get some help. I think there's also issues with vaccine hesitancy, where people are not wanting to get vaccinated, and certainly there's gonna be a group of people that do not want to get vaccinated no matter what, but there's also folks that maybe with some more information, it would help them go ahead and move forward. I really think, I really want to emphasize that all of our thinking in public health right now is that it's a good thing, there's very few side effects, the more people that get vaccinated, the quicker we're gonna get back to normal, and the quicker, the less the variants are gonna be able to get a foothold. So on, pretty much across the board right now, we're feeling like vaccines should be gotten as soon as possible, not to wait around. So the site, we've switched now, we're just doing Mondays in Lakeport, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in Clear Lake. This is partly related to the disparity question that Sarah was talking about, and also to demand. It seems like there's more demand at the Clear Lake end of the lake, and that's where some of the, more of the, of the lower quartile zip codes are, and so this is our way to try to address some of that. We are also starting to work with Sutter and Adventist, who've had trouble getting vaccine through their corporate chains, and they are now ready to start vaccinating again, and we're able to share vaccine with them. So Adventist is setting up appointments now, and they have quite a bit of vaccine, so if people want to get an appointment through Adventist, if you're already a patient there, you can do it that way. If you're not a patient but in the community and you're eligible, they are able to vaccinate you as well. So the number to call is 995-4500 for that, 995-4500. And so that's calling Adventist to get an appointment for the vaccine. Sutter is also doing this, and they'll be starting next week to set up a vaccine clinic again, and you can contact Sutter for that. So the pharmacies, Safeway and North Lake Pharmacy are also doing vaccine, and of course, tribal health is doing quite a bit of the vaccination. So we're trying to get it set up in the community to be doing it as well, and maybe once we, since the demand seems to be falling off a little bit, and we've gotten really a third of the adult population has been vaccinated at this point, we're probably gonna be moving into a situation where it makes more sense to do most of the vaccination through the clinics and the pharmacies. But for the next month or two, we're gonna keep working with the stand-up sites. And to speak to that, the state is sending in a bunch of staff, supposedly about 40 staff today. staff today, and we're going to be able to have them for probably two months to help us staff the stand-up site. So we're going to have to coordinate all that. You know, I think they're showing up this morning, which is this is a big deal. We need about that many to staff the site every day, but we've been really struggling with volunteers and with other county staff and with all different folks to really help us do this. And now it looks like the state's sending in this huge team to come in and help us. So during this week, we'll probably be doing the training and kind of getting it set up and then hopefully next week, we can just keep moving forward with this. So I think the idea right now is we're going to have these stand-up sites for another month or two and then probably start phasing them out as we start getting the demand really well saturated and we start, you know, Adventist and Sutter and some of the other sites are really getting their kind of vaccine efforts ramped up and kind of consistent and sustainable. So again, the appointments have been a bit of an issue and we really apologize for that. I think another week or so and it should stabilize, but this transition and everything has been a little bit challenging. So the first appointments, if you need a first appointment, you go onto the myturn.ca.gov website and sign up. We have appointments opened up for the rest of this week. We don't have the next week appointments opened up yet. And next week in Lakeport, we're not going to have any first appointments available. We're only going to do second appointments next week in Lakeport. But you can get it at Safeway, North Lake Pharmacy and at Sutter on the Lakeport edge of the lake here. And then the second appointments have been a little bit confusing to people. We now have a flyer on the website that MyTurn, since we've made the transition to MyTurn, the way you made your first appointment is different from your second appointment. So go ahead and try to see if you can work your way through the directions. If you can't, give us a call and we'll help you do that. But the second appointments are open for this week. They're not open for next week yet, should be by the end of the day or by tomorrow. So if you're due next week, you can go ahead and get on the link probably by tomorrow morning. So the qualifications, again, we're working on seeing if we can get those expanded. We think we're ready to do that. The state says it's okay to do that, but the MyTurn platform does not let us do that. So we're trying to leverage that door open and get it so that more people can be eligible. So hopefully that's going to happen in the coming days. Otherwise, everything seems to be going okay with the qualifications. We are still screening out people from out of the county, but otherwise, you know, if you qualify due to employment or due to age or due to chronic medical conditions, folks are getting in to do it. The Ethics Committee did meet again last week and here's their report. The committee requests data on our progress, vaccinating persons aged 65 to 74 and 75 and older. Depending on the data, the committee intends to consider the barriers impacting these groups and strategize how to address hesitancy. So again, I think that's a little bit of what we were talking about there, thinking about expanding the criteria and also addressing hesitancy. The committee recommends the public health officer continue to prioritize vaccine for congregant living situations, offering a single-dose vaccine subject to availability to inmates and persons residing in homeless shelters. And so we've done that. So I think that's pretty much it. The conclusions are that, you know, everything's moving forward and in a good way at this point. I think we're definitely seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I personally feel like things are going to, that we're moving out of the crisis mode and into a more stable kind of chronic situation now that we'll see little pockets of infection and things like that. But the best thing that could happen now is for people, more and more people to get vaccinated so that the vaccine will not have the ability to spread in the community and the variants will not get a good foothold. And you know, hopefully we're going to be seeing more and more opening up in the community. The state is coming out with some specific guidelines about outdoor gatherings and about graduations and about all these kinds of things. So it's all unfolding pretty quickly now. So I think this summer is going to be a lot better than last summer. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace, for your report and Sarah as well. Any comments or questions from the board for Dr. Pace? Supervisor Pyska?
I'm really happy to see that we have such high increases in the older groups. I know the 75 and older was holding strong at about 50%. So seeing up to 62 is really great and the 65 and older too. It was great seeing you on Friday at the vaccination clinic. Supervisor Sabatier and I split a shift and we've got to see how well the team is working there. It's a very well-oiled machine and lots of volunteers, but having 40 staff come from the state is going to be really impactful and I'm very grateful to hear that news today. So I just want to encourage everybody, if you have the opportunity to get vaccinated, to just do it. We have to move forward with this as quickly as we can, as efficiently as possible. And so when your time comes and if you're eligible, just go ahead and do it. Thanks, Dr. Pace.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
No, you answered all my questions I had.
I have a quick question. What stops us from opening it up? What's the repercussions? If we're getting vaccines and the demand is lower than the vaccine supply that we're receiving, what truly prohibits us other than a line and a piece of paper that says these are the guidelines? What would occur if we just said, well, we're moving on because we're not getting the number of people for the number of vaccines that we have? What exactly does that look like?
Well, right, I think there's a couple of different answers to that question. One is, so the quick and dirty answer is, in the past, there's been sort of threats about withholding vaccine or even prosecution if people did not adhere to the criteria, to the eligibility criteria. That seems to be sort of not a particular issue right now. The more important issue to me is, you know, we've been working really hard, like Supervisor Pyska said, you know, the older folks now are getting well, you know, the 75 and older, they were, I don't know, 62% of them now are vaccinated. So almost two-thirds of them have gotten at least one dose. That's amazing. You know, that's through the hard work of the senior centers, of social service, of everybody that's helped us reach out to these folks and get them. Because the idea was, we wanted to get the most vulnerable people first and not necessarily the people that were most savvy on how to get the internet appointments and that, you know, could get in the front of the line. And so that's worked so far. So now what we want to do is make sure that the folks with the chronic medical conditions that want to get vaccinated are able to get in the line, that the folks, the essential workers are getting it. And if they're not getting it, what are the obstacles? Is it because there's problems making appointments? Is it because they don't understand? Is it because they're not aware? They have transportation issues, all these kind of things? So part of my job is to make sure that we've kind of gotten most of those folks in the fold that want to be. But then the third part is really, you know, I sort of feel like we've kind of convinced ourselves that that's been done reasonably well at this point and we think there's going to be quite a bit more vaccine in the coming weeks. So we're not feeling the same level of, kind of the spigot's not open very well. Now the question is, so I want to make sure we had state permission. We got that yesterday, but now the platform, the scheduling platform, won't allow us to do it. And so now this is like a computer glitch at this point. It's not really any of the other things. And so we are actively in conversation with the computer people today to try to open that up. The state now is starting to hint that they're going to go ahead and just, in the next coming, in the next couple of days, open it up much broader. But they haven't come out and said that exactly yet. And if we can figure out how to do this in the computer, then we'll just go ahead and do it today or tomorrow, you know, as soon as we can. So I encourage people, probably what, if it's up to me, probably the next step is going to be 50 and over. Anybody 50 and over would be able to do it, it's a county resident. But we have to be able to incorporate that into the scheduling process.
And I appreciate you reminding me, I'd forgotten that you said that it was a computer glitch error of not being able to make those types of appointments rather than an issue coming straight from the state. So I appreciate you reminding me of that, which is good. And so I will continue to advocate for that change with my CSAT calls with the state, that we have that glitch fixed because I think it's important, not only for all people who are healthy, 50 and up, but also for our economy's sake, those who are not deemed essential but still need to continue working for them to have that possibility to get vaccination so they can get back to a little bit more normalcy as well. Right now, they're being prohibited unless they meet specific criterias. And so that's important to me as well, that we start looking at opening it up for that. And that would include a big part of our staff here at the County of Lake as well. Some have been able to get the vaccine, but that's due to meeting a specific criteria, not because of a grand criteria that everybody can fit into. And so I think that's where I would like for us to go eventually, and that looks like that's the case. Schools opened up a lot more as of this week, including some high schools and middle schools. Just wanted to check in, there's nothing other than their own school districts that can take that back. And they're going into purple, won't close them down. I know that I saw that we had a pretty big jump between Friday and Monday in our cases. We had 34 new cases. I was a little nervous about that, if that's a blip or if that's a continued trend. But as far as the schools reopening, once they're open, they can remain open. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, which is good. And do we know where we're at with the 4 million? Like approximately how many vaccines of those 4 millions have been submitted already? I know we breached the 2 million, which is what made us possible to get into red tier. How close are we to getting to that 4 million where we would only need, I believe, 5.0 cases per 100,000 in order to hit orange?
Let me check with Sarah. I'm not sure. She dropped off, but maybe she can look it up while we're talking.
Okay. And if not, I'll see if I can look it up later. I just didn't have the time.
It's on the state website, but let me have her look while she's there.
Okay. Other than that, I do appreciate the work that's been happening. The state sending 40 people is, no pun intended, a shot in our arm to be able to make things a little easier for our staff that have been working really hard throughout this whole pandemic. So I'm looking forward to that and I hope that it wasn't a typo and that it wasn't just four. 40 would be perfect and great and absolutely make a huge impact to what we're doing. I did have another question, it slipped my mind, but let's go ahead and open it up to the public if there's no other comments.
Yeah, dude. Maybe you think of something.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hello, Dr. Pace. I just had a question because you mentioned obstacles of people getting the vaccination. And so I just wanted to, in public forum, kind of discuss, what would people do with no insurance? Many will not even look at the situation as they're unemployed and obtain no insurance. And so they're reluctant to go to any, you know, care provider or even go to the actual sites to get it done or even try to attempt to do it online. So just wanted to see what they can do.
Right. Thank you for asking that. That's an excellent question. No insurance is necessary. You get asked if you have insurance, but it's not a barrier at all. So if you don't have insurance, just say no insurance. It's part of the way that they're, I think, setting up billing and potentially doing it at different sites. But nobody needs to pay for the vaccine at any of the sites. So if you're going to one of the pharmacies, they may ask for insurance and they may bill it, but if there's a copay or anything else, nobody should have to pay for the vaccine. And there's no barrier if you don't have insurance.
Thank you. I just worry because there's a lot of people that are already feeling beat down. They don't even want to try. They're just like, I'll just wait till this all ends. And so that's good news. I hope the people that asked me about this are listening and I will definitely let people know about that. Thank you.
And Supervisor, there's another thing just to mention about the hesitancy and the obstacles is that really I think, what I'm hoping is, once we get the state staff in place and they get stabilized and so we're running the sites with that staff, then we're going to be able to set up some kind of mobile ability to get out to the hard-to-reach folks or the homebound folks or the folks that are in the communities where they just are not able to get in for whatever reason and we can take the vaccine to them. That's really the best strategy in our county to help the folks that, for whatever reason, can't make it in, is to go out to them. But we just haven't had the ability to do that right now.
Excellent. Thank you for that, too.
So I did remember my question comment. And my conversation that I had with Supervisor Pyska on Friday while at the vaccine clinic, I thought of something that I'm not hearing about at all. And I don't think this is an Ethics Committee question. I guess it's more along the lines of outreach and how we're doing that to get people to understand that the vaccine is safe after millions and millions and millions of people throughout the entire world, especially, let's look at specifically in the United States, what has been approved by the FDA for emergency use. The number of negative consequences from taking the vaccine are extremely low. And the efficiency of the protection of the vaccine is well-known as well. It could be as high as in the 90s and some a little bit lower. And so I have not heard a single peep from us communicating with or Rotary communicating with us. And Rotary is known to be the champion of the polio vaccine and that's one of their things that they pride themselves on. And Rotarians are very well-respected folks in our community. They're business owners, they're educators, there's a broad spectrum of what they're involved in for them to be well-known in the community. Have we approached our Rotarians to ask them to be a part of our outreach, to talk about the vaccine, to talk about the importance of getting out of this situation and that our percentage of numbers that are hesitant is too large and we need to figure out how to minimize that? Has that approach been taken yet?
You know, this is a really important thread and no, having approached the Rotarians, we have done not a whole lot in terms of outreach for vaccine hesitancy. You know, we've basically been all hands on deck to get vaccine available to people. And hesitancy hadn't been an issue until really, I mean, we had more demand than we had supply. And so we were just trying to get it out as best we could to everybody. Now it looks like things are shifting a little bit and I think we are going to need to change our ability. If we had had more people, we certainly would have been working on this more in the previous months. But yeah, the Rotary Club, if anybody at the Rotary Club's interested in this topic, they should reach out to me or if you know somebody to talk with, we can reach out to them. But Hope Rising is helping some of this. The folks, we have a group working with the Latino population and another group working with the Native American population that are trying to address some of these questions. You know, it seems like the vaccine hesitancy question is different in different communities. So you know, when you read things, the communities of color tend to be more reluctant, but also the more conservative Republican, I read someplace that Republican men, over 50% of them, said that they will not ever take the vaccine. But their reasoning is probably completely different than the urban African-American community. So you know, it's going to be different ways to address that and very complex and we're going to be working on that. You know, I think once we can get these 40 folks, if they're really coming today and we really get them stood up, then we can start getting staff to be able to focus on some of these other issues that are equally as important and really mean a lot for the long-term health of the community. So a long answer, sorry, but if you have somebody at the Rotary Club or if somebody wants to contact me, we'd be happy to talk with them about trying to do some of that because we can use the help.
Okay. I will reach out to the ones that I know and see if we can get that conversation started. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can I, I did get the answer to your question about the first quartile doses. So last week, I believe it was 2.2 million had been completed in the lowest quartile in the state and now it's 2.9 million. So it's risen by 7 million doses in the last, I'm sorry, 0.7 million doses, 700,000 doses in the last week. So we're at 2.9 million now, we need to cross 4 million. So probably, you know, 10 more days, something like that, we'll probably be in there. And then they would do probably retroactive one week. We're not, even if we get there, we need to be under six cases per 100,000. So we're at about 6.6 this week. So you know, we're in the range, but we're not quite there yet. But they should move these metrics in another two weeks and then we'll have to be in the orange for two weeks before we can actually flip the switch.
Well, the vaccine's helping us get there. So thank you very much for that information. Any further questions before we open it up to the public? All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Um.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to do a quick introduction to your board of another face in our disaster response. He's here with us today. It's Dr. Evan Bloom, so you can see him. Evan has been assisting Dr. Pace in our pandemic response for the last several months. And he will become a face that's known to you because we have a couple of Tuesdays in April when Dr. Pace will be away, and Dr. Bloom will give you this report. So I'm grateful to Dr. Bloom for showing up in the Zoom. He, in addition to his work supporting our effort, he is a emergency room physician at Advent Health in Clear Lake. Thank you, Dr. Bloom.
And he worked the graveyard shift last night. So we're really appreciative he's here today, yeah.
Well, thank you for being here with us, Dr. Bloom, and thank you for your assistance throughout the time here with us during the pandemic. Appreciate that. All right. Jake, let's go ahead and check and see if you have a public comment. Please raise your hand. The button is at the bottom of your screen, or if you are on your phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand.
It looks like we do have one hand raised. We have Melissa Fulton here.
Okay, let's go ahead and unmute Melissa Fulton.
Melissa, you should have received a notice to unmute?
Yep. That notice is not coming out. I just did unmute, obviously. And the other thing is that this week, we do not have a gallery of everyone who's on the phone call. I wondered if there was a reason for that.
So we are using the new webinar, Zoom webinar, which allows us to have a higher level of functionality from the host perspective and making sure that there's no surprises in folks that are unmuted or folks that show video of things that shouldn't be shown. And since we've opened it up to the public here in the chambers, we thought we would give this a shot. And we have provided a fair warning to the public in the past week or so that this would be coming up. And we also did a presentation about a month ago about how webinar, Zoom webinar would be.
Right. And we've been putting out all of the notices that come out from the supervisor's office, which of course includes all of Dr. Pace's updates. And I clicked in, as I usually do, and did not realize the change that was taking place. So the reason that I raised my hand is because I am a member of and past president of the Lakeport Rotary Club. And so offline, I will communicate with Dr. Pace and Dr. Bloom so we can contact all four Rotary Clubs in the county and get them involved, however that moves forward. So I just wanted to let you know. And I certainly want to thank all of you for the information you're sharing. I've already shared with my staff this morning some of the more relevant points that if we get calls here concerning the vaccines and the testing, that we will be able to answer those. In particular, the fact that the payment issue for getting vaccines. But we are more than happy to continue to push this out to not just our members, but a rather large mailing list that we have, which includes the Clear Lake Chamber and all the business associations. So we're, we're happy to be able to do that. And thank you for the information. It's certainly good to hear that this is going the direction it's going. And I know all of us will keep doing the very best we can to make sure it continues in that direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Again, if you have a public comment on this COVID-19 update, please click on Raise Hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if you're on your phone, dial star nine. And it would appear that we have no further public comment. Any final comments from the board before we close this item?
Yeah, one final comment. Dr. Pace, you know, once again, I just want to thank all the volunteers, our, you know, our Public Health Department, the nurses, everybody that's been going. I know we got, you know, still a ways to go here, but each and every week, I just think that we need to, you know, which we always do as a board, just commending them for their dedication, their service. We know how hard this is. COVID fatigue is something that everybody's dealing with. But I just wanted to thank you very much for all your efforts throughout this. And thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pace, for your report. And we'll see you next week. And let's hopefully you walk out of your office and see 40 people.
Mr. Chair, just a quick point of clarification. The board does not meet next week, so--
Yes, yes.
--great quality. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that reminder. Okay, let's move on to item 6.3, our 9:45 a.m. item, public hearing. Vacation of a roadway known as Arabian Lane, County Road Number 148D in the Hidden Valley Lake area. Director De Leon, I know I saw you here, and there you are. You popped up.
Morning.
Good morning.
On February 23rd of 2021, your board approved a resolution of intent to vacate the roadway known as Arabian Lane. During that approval, you set a time and date for a public hearing for March 16th. That was continued to today. So today is the opportunity for your board to consider any evidence presented by interested parties for the abandonment and of Arabian Lane. So we here at Public Works have not received any, any information or any input. Obviously, public hearing, there's opportunity for any members of the public to, to comment. And we are proposing and recommending that your board follow through with the vacation of Arabian Lane. So with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. And again, this is an opportunity for any interested members of the public to provide input towards this proposal.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your presentation. Any comments or questions from the board on this item?
Just comment, glad to be here today. I know this has been something that's been worked on. Obviously, you know, it is in regard to the Valley Oaks project down there. So I want to thank your department, Scott, for getting it here to this point, and hopefully we can get this finalized today. I did have one question when I was looking at the resolution, and just if it needs to be a fix. It says there was a public hearing was held on March 16th, 2021. Just wonder if we got any, we need to fix that, obviously, because I know it was scheduled. We didn't hear it, so it was moved to the 23rd. Will that be something we need to fix in the resolution?
It was my understanding that the, the meeting was opened on the 26th and continued. So I would defer to County Council to whether that date needs to be modified or perhaps additional language specifying that the meeting on the 16th was opened and then continued. I'll defer to County Council for that.
Ms. Grant?
Yes, thank you. I would suggest that the, the resolution be amended to just read a public hearing was held on March 23. Although the matter was taken up on the 16th and the hearing continued by board order, the hearing wasn't technically open. So I think Supervisor Simon's point's well taken. You can just simply change it. But it makes me very happy to see everyone looking for accuracy here because that's the most important thing. So thank you.
Thank you very much for chiming in, and thank you Supervisor Simon for catching that. Any other comments? I do have a quick question. And the word vacation for a road seems very odd until you just use the word vacate. But is this basically the same concept as the surplus? Or is this a specific concept because of the fact that this was provided to us by the state at one point in time? It's just, we've gone through some different iterations of this. Just kind of curious if this is the basic parallel to a normal surplus of property, but because it's a road, it's different?
You're absolutely correct, Chair Sabatier. We have gone through a couple iterations. You're recalling that we did declare this surplus, but you're, you're correct. Because the state relinquished this to us with specifically as a public road, we have to go through the vacation process. And I, I kind of mentioned that in the cover memo, but you're, you're spot on. That's, that's the reason we're doing it.
Apologize for duplication there.
No apology necessary. I appreciate the clarification. But yeah, absolutely. That's, that's why we're doing this is because it was relinquished as a public, public roadway.
And just real quick, and hopefully it's not in the memo either. I know originally when we discussed this, this was to be sold to the developer of the Valley Oaks. This is still the case?
Well, we're ultimately, that's ultimately the, the final outcome of this. County Council and I have some additional work to do here, but that's ultimately the goal. Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Grant.
I, I wouldn't say sold necessarily because if the road is vacated, the county's interest in the road is vacated. But, but Mr. De Leon is right. We're working on, on how best to proceed with regard to the vacating of a public road. There are only so, so many outcomes that are available.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing and open up for public comment. Again, click on your Raise Hand icon at the bottom of your screen if you're on your computer or your phone. If you are calling in to the Zoom room, please dial star nine to raise your hand. Okay. Wanted to make sure, give people adequate time to find all their buttons. Looks like we have no public comments, so let's go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I would like to offer the resolution, but I need, do need to do an amendment on the public hearing was held on March 23rd, 2021. If we could just change that date. But I will offer the resolution. 2021-20.
Resolution has been offered. Johanna, if we could please have a roll call?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director De Leon.
Thank you.
And let's go ahead and move on to item six point, no, we can't. So let's go ahead and since we are running out of items here, let's go ahead and take a quick break. We'll be back at 10:15 for a presentation of employees' service award. All right. It is 10:15. Welcome back. We are going to move on and do item 6.4, Presentation of Employee Service Awards. And CAO Hutchinson, would you like to take this on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm handing this over to our HR Director Pam Samick.
Good morning, Pam.
Good morning. This morning, we are taking time to honor our employees for their dedication, loyalty, hard work to the County of Lake. And let me share my screen.
Thank you for sharing your screen. I was hoping that we can all see the names rather than just hear them. I think it's important for everyone.
So we're starting out with 10 years of service?
Hold on. Do we see your screen?
We don't. We don't.
You have to submit the screen share once you select it, if that makes sense.
No, how do I do that?
So once you select what you want to share, you have to confirm it at the bottom of that window. You click on Screen Share, and that pops up a window, and then you select what window you want to share, and then you hit Share.
I see.
Yes, perfect.
Share.
There we go.
So we're starting with 10 years of service. Environmental Health, Cheryl Bennett. Behavioral Health, Teresa Newton. Gerald Ryan. Patricia Trahilio. Social Services, Nicholas Goncaco. James Brog. Elsa Hernandez. Andrew Hoffman. Patricia Ledoux-Hurwick. 15 years of service. Sheriff's Department, Benjamin Moore. Kimberly Freel. Joseph Dutra. Marisol Gallardo. Probation, Earl Idens. Eva Lara. Teddy Walker. Animal Care and Control, Sarah Schramm. Public Works, Juan Nuez. Environmental Health, Pacade Pissado. Behavioral Health, Vanessa Mayer. Social Services, Deborah Cassair. Barbara Cole. Brendan Foal, Public Services. Public Works, Christopher Hamel. Special Districts, John Sparks. Public Works, James Van Ruin. 20 years of service. Child, excuse me, Child Support Services, Christine Smith. Sheriff's Department, Gavin Wells. Probation, Kenneth Monifranz. Behavioral Health, Laura Calderon. Social Services, Grayson Elliott. Special Districts, Everett Prescott. 25 years of service. Elections, Maria Valdez. Sheriff's Department, Christopher Chowalski. David Lance. Public Works, Christopher Prather. Public Services, Charles Fains. 30 years of service. Jeff Rayne. With County Council. Lester Dieter, Social Services. Next is 40 years of service. Sheriff's Department, Mary Beth Strom. Thank you for your dedicated service to the County of Lake.
Thank you very much for that. And standing ovation is absolutely deserved. We have people who are dedicating decades of their lives to this county. And it takes so many people to make the services that we offer and provide to our communities to make that happen. And each one of those people that were listed today are part of the cog in the wheel that make everything turn so we can make things happen. From building roads to providing social services, to helping people who are dealing with mental health issues, it takes all. And so appreciate every one of those names up there. And I cannot believe that we have 30 years and 40 years of services. That is a lifetime of services and dedication to the County of Lake. And thank you so much for all of you that have, that are giving so much of yourself to everyone else here in Lake County. Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I think you did a beautiful job. Just thank you. That is incredible to, for the staff to be here this long. It definitely takes all of us working together to, to provide all the services, like you stated, for our community here in-- all the services like you stated, um, for our community here and its, its dedication. And, and these are the faces too. You not only see, um, working for the county, but they're out volunteering and you see them in the community, um, helping out. So they're also part of, of our community as a whole.
Correct.
Yeah, just want to follow up with both, uh, Supervisor Scott and, uh, Chair Sebastian. Uh, thank you so much for your service and, uh, especially, uh, over this last year. And every, every year, uh, we get to do this. Obviously greatly appreciated. This year was live, you know, very challenging. Want to thank each and every one of you, um, for just your service and everything that was done to, uh, take care of our community throughout this last year because every department, uh, did a great job, did their part, uh, one way or the other. So thank each and every one for your time of service. Uh, but it really needs to be recognized. This last year was a real challenge and thank you for being here and doing that.
Supervisor Pyska?
But it's clear that, um, all of these, um, employees believe in our county and it shows. And, um, I just really want to thank you for all of your dedication and all of your service and thank you for believing in Lake County.
Yes. Thank you for your hard work, dedication and service.
And if there's no further comment, and I'm looking at Director Samick as well as CAO Hutchinson, if there's no further comment, then let's go ahead and open up to the public. Uh, maybe there's some of these folks here with us today. Uh, in fact, I see our, uh, 40-year Strong, Mary Beth Strong with us. Um, and if there's any comments from the public, please, now is your time for this dedication to our employees. Click on the raise hand icon on the bottom or, uh, star nine if you are calling in into the Zoom room.
We do have a hand raised from the Zoom room. We have, uh, uh, as this Danielle Joy Ginn. I have, uh, allowed you to talk and asked you to unmute. Uh, it looks like you're unmuted. Please confirm your first and last name.
Hi, it's Donnell Gwynn.
Hello, Donnell.
Hi. Um, I might've missed it, but I'm not sure if you read the five-year, um, the list of five-year people?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Okay. Sorry, I missed.
There was close to, I think, 10, uh, five-year employees.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair, actually, the five-year awards are given in the department.
Oh, did we only read the tenure? I thought I saw the five-year on there.
Pam?
No, we, um, we present the five years at the individual department meetings.
Do you have that list? If, uh, I'm sure the chair would allow you to read it. Do you have that list handy for the five-year?
Do. I don't have it in the presentation format.
If you could just read the names?
Please.
Auditor Controller, Amanda Johnson. IT, Jacob Brenke. Sheriff's Department, Wesley Bespro, probation. Aaron Jakari, Rhodes. Danielle Coring. Mental Health, Bradley Wilson. Randall Cole. Integrated Waste Management, Sheila Carr. Social Services, Brian Els. Casey Blue. Carrie Holden. Jennifer Law. Amber Linden. Katie Nail. Julia Miller. Julian Robbie. Tina Warren. Catherine Johnson. Section Eight Housing, Lori Patresa. Museum. Carolyn Berry. And Flood Lake Management, Alan Webb.
Thank you for reading those. I think it's important that we, uh, recognize them. I, I recognize that it was on our, um, agenda item, uh, in the documents attached that they were on there. I didn't recognize that that, they weren't read out loud. So I appreciate, uh, the public comment, uh, requesting that. And thank you, Director Samick, for reading those out loud. I think, I think it's good to recognize everyone from five years on up. Uh, five years is already a, an amazing amount of time and the rest is even more amazing. So thank you. Any other public comment?
Going forward.
Okay. Uh, any other public comment? Again, click on the raise hand or star nine if you're calling into the Zoom room. And I see a hand from Rob Howe.
Okay. Good morning, Board. I just wanted to give a quick thank you to not only, of course, the, uh, Rob Howe, Chief Probation Officer for Lake County. Um, not only a thank you to the employees here, of course, in, in my department, for all of Lake County's long-term employees. Uh, it's in hard times like COVID or, or regular times when we're short-staffed, it's these people that we rely on. It's their expertise, their experience, um, that picks up the slack. It's the same people we rely on to, to teach and train our new employees. Um, so in short, we just rely on them and I wanted them to, to know how much we appreciate them and to thank them. So thank you, Board.
Thank you, Director Howe. Next, let's go ahead and unmute Director Marketing.
Morning. Crystal Marketant, Department of Social Services. I just, um, wanted to, uh, shout out to Les Dieter, how much he is appreciated. He's been at the department for 30 years, which is a lifetime. I mean, he has truly made it a career. He started as an eligibility worker in 1990 and, um, has been with Child Welfare as an analyst for, let's see, since 2008. And, um, Les's coworkers, uh, think of him as a dedicated, loyal employee who has a calm and compassionate demeanor and is, um, a pleasure to work with. So thank you so much, Les, and I hope you're watching.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Ms. Grant.
Thank you very much. I don't have a hand to raise, apparently. The, uh, I just wanted to give a, a recognition of Jeff Ryan in our office for his 30-year commitment. Uh, I think the entire office is, is somewhere on Zoom today, or at least we're trying. With lawyers, it's always hard to tell. But, uh, Jeff didn't want any kind of fuss or real acknowledgement of his 30 years beyond this, uh, memorial today. Uh, however, he doesn't know that we'll all be singing to him via Zoom at some point when he least expects it. So.
It's a perfect opportunity to mention that while he's not watching, so it's still a surprise.
Oh, it'll be a surprise regardless.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, we have Director Ewing.
All right. Uh, good morning. Uh, similar thanks, uh, a couple of staff that, that, uh, from public services that, uh, one is probably operating a piece of equipment at the landfill, another that's, that's out there at the, at the parks right now, but, um, but certainly a big appreciation to them. Uh, and I, I think it's, it's important. 40 years with, with Mary Beth, uh, you know, not my department, but, uh, that's, that's just amazing. So Mary Beth, thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Ewing. Director Palmero?
Hi. Good afternoon, your Board, or good morning. Um, I want to just give a big shout out to two of our environmental health, uh, inspectors. These are our, two of our licensed inspectors, Cheryl Bennett and, um, Pacade Pissada. Um, one has 10 years and one has 15 years. So a combined of 25 years of experience there and how much, you know, I appreciate their hard work, their efforts, especially through the last year. Um, Cheryl has definitely been one of our go-to, um, employees for helping us with the community, um, with regulations relating to COVID and stuff. So thank you to both of them.
Thank you. And I see, uh, Director Howe, do you put your hand back up?
Yeah, I know I already got my turn, but I, I feel like I gotta throw something out there for Mary Beth Strong too. Uh, prior to this job, I, I worked 20 years with the Sheriff's Office and that felt like an entire career for me. And to, to realize and see that that's only half the time she's been there is, is just crazy. So thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you for the comment. I see Director DeLeon is on.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna jump on the bandwagon here and make a, a special acknowledgement, um, uh, specifically Chris Prather, uh, who's been with us for, uh, you know, at least half of his life. And, and the thing I'd like to point out and use Chris as an example, um, and it applies to, uh, uh, Chris Hamel and others. Uh, Chris Prather started with us as, uh, you know, as a maintenance worker, uh, and, and has just worked his way through the ranks and is now, uh, a road area foreman, uh, and, uh, has just done an outstanding job for us, uh, and the, the county. He's worked, uh, in multiple areas. Um, he, he lives on Cobb, but he, um, you know, he's worked all over the county and, um, has done amazing work here. And, and he sets the example for, uh, our younger employees who, who see that if they stick with this, uh, that good things happen and you can, and you can work your way up. And, um, uh, just really appreciate him and, uh, just want to acknowledge that. I also would like to acknowledge, uh, Mary Beth, um, amazing, amazing, uh, accomplishment. 40 years, uh, is, is like, like all that other department heads have said, is just, is tremendous work and I congratulate you on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Director DeLeon. I do not see any more hands. I'll do one quick final call. If you have a public comment for this item in appreciation of our staff and their years of service, uh, please raise your hand by clicking the icon at the bottom of your screen or dialing star nine if you happen to be on a phone, if you called in through a phone. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. I'll just make a, a final comment. Um, every single one of you who are employees of the county are appreciated. Uh, it, from the very bottom all the way to the top, uh, I know that your managers, your department heads and, uh, our, our board appreciates the hard work that you do to provide the services that we try to organize and put together, uh, for everyone in our communities to thrive and have a better life. And so, uh, you're, you're all working towards a greater vision. Uh, I know that sometimes you, you get bogged down into the work that you do and you may not be able to see the larger picture, but know that you are working for the greater good for everyone to have a better life tomorrow. So thank you so much for your work. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item six point five, our 10:30 a.m. item. A, consideration of report from the Lake County Tourism Improvement District on its activities over the past year and B, approve agreement between the County of Lake and Visit Lake County, California for the provision of administrative services in the amount of $78,000 from March 2nd, 2021 to June 30th, 2021 to authorize the chair to sign. And I believe we have our Lake TID group. Go ahead and, uh, if you want to grab these seats up front or just speak on the microphone up front, whatever is more comfortable for you.
Mr. Chair, they do have a PowerPoint that staff is prepared to show in the boardroom and also in the Zoom room.
Perfect.
So we want to make sure we've got that loaded. Uh, the team had it in advance.
So Honorable Board of Supervisors, my name's Larry Galuppi.
If, if it's possible for you to speak in the microphone, thank you.
I'm Larry Galuppi. I'm the chairman of Lake County, uh, TID Board. I'm also the hotel director for Twin Point Casino and a proud member of Middletown Rancheria. With me today is Brian Fisher, owns the Suites Antolment, and Lynn Butcher. She owns the Talman in Upper Lake. They are our communications committee. Uh, they work really close with our consultants. And Brian's gonna lead the, the presentation today.
Perfect. Thank you very much for the introductions.
Hey, everybody. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for having us. Um, I think we're, uh, we're, okay, sorry about that. And I don't have control over that, so I want to make sure. Uh, so we wanted to, you know, thank you very much for having us in and we wanted to, uh, talk to you a little bit about, um, the modernization of Lake County's communications process. It's, it's an investment that we feel is going to pay dividends for many years to come. Um, so 2020, uh, was quite a crazy year. Uh, let's be honest. Uh, we were all set to launch our first ever advertising campaign in early spring of 2020, uh, but on March 17th-ish, uh, we, like everybody else, were tossed into a world, uh, we could no longer predict. Uh, the TID Board continued to meet two times a month, uh, staring into an ever uncertain future. Uh, we canceled all of our advertising plans and, uh, waited patiently to really see when to move forward. Um, the sign really never came all year. Uh, in hindsight, the right decision was made, uh, although it didn't feel like it at the time. Sometimes we really questioned what we should be doing. Um, we continued to work, uh, on some of the most important goals that we'd set out for ourselves at the beginning of the year. And so here's a look at those accomplishments.
So who's controlling?
Yeah, I'm not sure who's controlling.
If you could just tell them when you want to go to the next slide.
So yeah, we can go to the next one, please. Slide?
Sure. Yep.
Okay, there. Thank you very much. Yeah, synced up. Uh, okay. So we built a state-of-the-art website, uh, using the newest tools. It's ADA compliant, um, it's search optimized and above all, easy to manage on our end, as the site that we inherited was, uh, basically fail on many of those fronts. Uh, today, the site is ready for the new visitors. We hope to direct there. So a brand-new website was finished in 2020. Uh, we also added, next slide, please. We also added two key members to the team overseeing very important pillars in our modern-day communications plan, social media and media relations. Both positions were filled with in-county talent. Karen Pavoni has a background in social media management, um, having worked on the behalf of many clients in both Marin and Sonoma, and she's also a great photographer. She now directs our Instagram and Facebook pages. Trudy Wakefield has demonstrated her passion for Lake County with her founding role in the Lake County Bloom, a weekly chronicle of all good things happening in Lake County. Trudy now runs our media relations. Next slide, please. Uh, so in a year when hard advertising was inappropriate, we focused on building our social following and, and it worked. Um, we saw more than 120% increase in the number of people following Visit Lake County on Facebook. We now have 70, or we now have 31,377 followers. Karen's posts, uh, highlighting the beauty of Lake County regularly draw audiences into the thousands and are managed, and are magnified as they're shared all around the country. Karen has become the social media voice of Lake County, uh, interacting with many of the people who reach out to us for more information and it's a daily, daily job. Next slide, please. Um, prior to our modernization of social, we were primarily talking to ourselves. Um, no real city outside of, or town outside of Lake County came up in the top 10 for sure, if not top 20. Uh, now you will see that our new weekly reach is very important, i- is in really important travel markets to Lake County. Here's the top 10 list reached just last week. Sacramento, San Francisco, San Jose, Stockton. So we're reaching the communities that we want to reach to encourage them to come to Lake County. Uh, the next slide, please. Uh, Trudy dove straight into the deep end, writing original features on Lake County and promoting them to outside media outlets. Visit California, arguably one of the most important voices in the tourism industry for, with over 30 million unique visitors, featured Lake County prominently and now reaches out to Trudy on a monthly basis for feature ideas. Active NorCal, a blog, has packed, uh, has picked up many of Trudy's features as well. And she's hard at work building relations with the LA Times, San Francisco Chronicle, Sunset Magazine, Seattle Times, and travel blogs like Week in Sherpa. Her work is really just beginning. Next slide, please. Um, after a short hiatus, uh, we brought back our monthly newsletter. Each month, we feature a different hiking, a different activity, hiking, wine tasting, fishing, dining in Lake County. Uh, the newsletter is sent out to a list of over 7,115 opt-in emails, a list we have, uh, grown by over 521 in just the last few months alone. Next email, please? Or next slide? Next email, yeah. Um, our asset, we built an asset bank. We began the first ever Lake County, um, asset bank, uh, on Dropbox with professional photography and video taken all over the county. Here's a short list of some of the many locations we shot in 2020. Next, please. Uh, we ventured cautiously into print as it's hard to measure and can be expensive. Uh, we ran half-page four-color ads in two hugely popular spring travel publications. AAA's Via Magazine, where? That one here?
March issue.
Uh, the March issue, um, and, uh, the California Visitors Guide, a copy of which, which we have, uh, for all of you folks today. So we're two very key places, we think, for print. Um, next slide, please. So, so while we're delighted to have raised more than $250,000 last year, i- in a very unique year, we will need substantially more going forward to compete for the travelers with neighboring counties who have been in this business of promoting their constituents for years and have millions of dollars to spend. That's a look at our 2020 revenues. So let's take a look ahead. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And the next slide, please. We will continue to partner with Beelow and Company as we begin to advertise in 2021. Beelow brings us a deep bench of talents we cannot find in Lake County. They are unique in their ability to work with many small cities, towns, counties, all across the country. Amber Rowe, the third person over in this lineup at the top, is our account manager and I speak with her on a weekly basis, if not more. We have started, as we've now just started our advertising in actually February. We can, we can call on any of these other talented people you see here, whether it's for analytics from Shane or website issues from Ian. They continue to be a really great partner for us and will be a big asset for us moving forward. Next slide, please. So, in a nutshell, so our primary goal is to increase overnight visitors. We have established metrics to measure our goals, newsletter signups, website traffic. However, due to COVID, we're only now starting to generate data and to see the effectiveness of these efforts. But that's what we're going to continue to look at and follow and try to be database and be very smart about what we do. Next slide, please. The media channels that we're going to be utilizing are programmatic display advertising and long-form native advertising, paid search and paid social. And I'll give you just a quick example of each of these in the next few slides. Next slide, please. So, programmatic display advertising is digital banners and teasers that appear on websites. They drive people to our website with links. In this case, the ad reads, "Five hikes you must take. With 100-plus miles of trails, here are the top five spots locals like to take a hike." The link to the full story is on the Lake County website. Here is a series of ads, next slide, please. Here is a series of ads that appear as a slideshow. America's oldest lake, California's cleanest air, and views that last forever, sounds mighty nice, doesn't it? So, stretch your legs and your imagination, Lake County, California. See what makes us clearly different. Next slide, please. In kind of the very unsexy category of paid search, we all know, all travelers start their journey by searching online. Whether on Google or Bing, we want Lake County to be there for key searches. Here are three examples of those searches. The middle search reads, "Lake County camping and RV parks, clear lake, Mount Canuck Die and more. See what makes us California's best-kept secret." This search query delivered 2,178 clicks to our website from 2,300 impressions, giving it a 9.38 click-through, way ahead of industry standards. Note, our search ads are going to constantly be updated and performance-driven based on algorithms from the search engine. So, they're, they're constantly in a state of kind of evolving. Next slide, please. Paid social. Paid social puts our social feed in front of people we know to have an affinity for what makes Lake County unique, hiking, boating, biking, camping, wine tasting. We take key posts and feature them as sponsored to a wider audience, building our social following for years to come. Here are just four examples of those sponsored posts that we ran on social. So, we, we know we're on our way and we'll continue to need the county's support without a doubt to help spread the word that Lake County has so much to offer visitors from all over California and the country and quite frankly, the world. So, that's our update for you today.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, I just appreciate the update. Obviously, we know the challenges of last year and as we move through things. So, I'm excited to see what has been created at this point and really with the opportunity that we're moving in a direction to open things up and bring back our business and really advertise who we are, tell our story. Thank you. That's what I'll say. I know it's a partnership with the county and all the businesses and everybody who want to be involved with this, but when it came on the board, that was one thing that I think we were lacking here in the county is telling our story. A lot of folks are telling our story from the outside, looking in on us, but now we're doing it from the inside. We all know how beautiful this place is. We know how dedicated our businesses are to make sure that they have enjoyable trips when people come here to visit. And I just want to thank you. I know this is going to help us highlight it as we move forward. So, thank you very much for the presentation and good work.
Thank you Supervisor.
Supervisor Pisca.
Supervisor Simon, you pointed out that this is us telling our story and I think you hit it right there. This, this team's been working hard for quite a few years and I've been attending these meetings. I think it's been over two years now. I think the right choice last spring, when everything kind of changed suddenly, was to focus on the website and the social. I think you guys did a brilliant job. The website is beautiful. So, I, I think that really paid off. You guys did a great job. I'm happy to be a part of the team. I really appreciate collaborating with all of you. Well done.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I've been involved with the TID since I think when it was, when it started back in the 2018, I think it was, trying to help get some people to sign on, aboard and whatnot. So, attended some meetings and of course, yeah, it was right when, actually when they, when they did the spin-off for everything, it was right when we had those fires, the second set of fires in 2019, I think it was. And that's when they, they presented the logo and all sorts of other ideals and we started making some headway, but of course, that was a little hindered by that, that event, that, you know, fire and then the pandemic hit. And so, it's just been kind of like, you know, fighting uphill, but they're doing it, you know? And so, I like that we're in the, you said the AAA magazine, that's, that's, a lot of people get those. And, you know, I know once we get things going again and I'm involved with the meetings, I like to discuss how we're one of the highways right next to the, to the lake. And I'm sure we've talked about that, but I just, I like that that's there because people driving, all of those different things, all of our attributes that we could show to, to the world why we're so special. So, again, thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott.
Thank you for the update. I know the last time we spoke, we were talking about how Lake County really did not have a presence online and our social media wasn't there and how important that is. So, it's exciting that we're seeing the hits, just even with this last year, how crazy everything's been with COVID. We were already seeing the percentages going up and getting our name out there and just clicking on something that looks like a place you'd want to visit. And we didn't have that before. So, really thank you for all this hard work and putting Lake County on the map and bringing people in.
So, yes, thank you very much for all your hard work. I love what you've been doing in the time of pandemic, trying to figure out how can you still move forward, especially at a time where hotels and lodging is really hurting due to the lack of travel and the quarantining. I appreciate all the hard work and I want to see you continue to progress. I would like for you to maybe present a little bit more detail on Part B. You're asking for $76,000, either 76 or 78, I forget the exact number, I'd have to look. $78,000. Can you provide some further details as to what specific plans you have for those funds to us and the public?
Yeah, we right now, starting with February, entered into a media contract with Beelow for just over 100, about $120,000. So, some of those, the three efforts that you saw there, programmatic, search and paid social, we're going to be spending about half of our revenue on that in the first just six months alone. So, we are definitely, you know, now in the game. So, a lot of stuff is going on in terms of, we need, we actually need a lot more assets for the county. It's interesting, when you start an asset bank, you have kind of a pleasant time. All of our assets show everybody with sunny shoulders out in a beautiful summer afternoon. And this winter, we were like, okay, well, that's not what wine tasting looks like right now. So, we're going to continue to definitely work on that asset bank. And we have bigger plans. I mean, there's a lot we would love to do, folks, with media. We have a very, very small budget and we're not complaining about that because that's the budget we have. But we would love to be able to do, you know, maybe some outdoor in key markets. So, there's a lot that we would love to do to promote the county and think that we would be successful doing it.
I'd just like to add that everything we do is with volunteers. So, all of our money right now, other than, you know, insurance and kind of the minimums you have to spend to be a nonprofit, is going towards productive assets such as the website, such as the campaign. Like I say, it's all volunteer work. The other thing I would just like to add is we are extremely fortunate to have this guy because his, his background is in advertising and marketing and he's techie and, I mean, without Brian, I don't know how we would manage right now. We'd be paying for much more outside advice and we're just, we really are a bare-bones operation right now, trying to get as much bang for the buck as we can. And Beelow's been great. We're very fortunate that we have them too.
And so, at this moment in time, do you have a baseline for a number of beds for the year where we can look at further data later this year? Hopefully, it's not an anomaly year because 2020 is difficult to compare and contrast. But do you have like 2019 and 2018 numbers where then we can look at how 2021 has helped increase based on the marketing that you've done? Is that all prepared?
Yeah, no, we really don't have those type of baseline numbers. In 18, when we, or in 19, when we really started the efforts, we started with building like really key areas that we needed to build, which were definitely our brand. We didn't have a brand and so we needed to build the brand and we spent the time building the brand. And then in 19, when we were supposed to start our advertising, or excuse me, in 20, of course, we did not. And so, we, we worked on social. So, our success metrics have been in the two areas that we know we focused on, which was let's build social. It's kind of a soft sell advertising, but it's a way to reach people, really free eyeballs. We now have 31,000 folks who follow us that we don't pay for. So, that was a key number and just as a point of reference, Mendocino has about 51,000. So, we felt like we really made some great, some great headway there. We know we can do it, we focus on it. But in terms of heads and beds, we haven't got those measurements yet. We just have started and then we too don't have a lot of the tools that are going to tell us. We don't have a universal booking system on our website. Our website is going to refer people to the Talman Hotel and we'll be looking at those referrals to it, but it would be up to Lynn then to have the technology on her end to say, you know, that they booked a three-night stay. So, we don't have some of those major tools that, you know, other counties definitely have, but we're not going to cry about that. We're just going to keep moving forward and bring people because we know from remittances that things are up. We've done, we've, our two businesses have done fairly well this year. So, those are the key indicators that we feel we're looking at. You mentioned also social. So, when we took over our social and began to, to create our narrative, wow, it was a minefield when we took it over. There were so many trolls that wrote such negative things. It was, it was crazy and that's all gone. They've all, they all kind of just dissipate into the woodwork. Every now and then it'll come out, but Karen was hiding on average two or three comments a day where people were just, you know, rah. And we expected it, but that's definitely changed. So, we feel like we're controlling the narrative, as you said, Tina. We have our own narrative. It's a great narrative. We have a lot to sell here, folks. We know that. We just need the continued support to keep doing it.
I definitely agree with that. I think sometimes Lake County, we are our own worst enemy when we're trying to promote ourselves and it is an internal change that we have to do with ourselves of how we speak about Lake County, how we speak about the place that we, we live and we love. And that has been a mission, just not even with your group, but just all the different groups of how we look at ourselves and talk about ourselves is going to change the way people from the outside are going to view us too.
I think one of the things the Chair was, was asking is do we know what our occupancy was before and therefore can measure the after? Data regarding number of rooms and how, how many rooms people are selling is very hard for us to come by. I think we don't have access to as much information as the county does because TOT is confidential. I don't know quite how all that works, but we are struggling to get as much data as possible. We have a fairly passive constituency. Hoteliers are all just very busy, I think, making beds and cooking breakfast and trying to get people in and out of their rooms. So, one of our projects is to try and get more involvement from our constituents so we can know better what changes we've made. It's going to be right for the short term, it's going to be really just based on total collection of revenue because that's what tells us whether people are making, you know, selling more rooms than they were before. So, that kind of data eventually we might have and maybe other counties do, but we just, we just don't have it.
And I think that one of the baselines we do have is our TOT and we can see if there's an increase in that or not. It's depending on the value of the rooms as well, but still, we can see if there's an increase, then most likely it means there was an increase of activity as well in our lodging. I, I love what you guys are doing. I think that it's the most organized and most realistic process that I've seen so far to really get us on the map. I know you're working with folks over at the state to make sure that it's not just us working in a vacuum. You're working with other agencies outside of us. And my last question is, you're asking for the $78,000, but you're asking for it up through June 30th, 2021. What happens after June 30th, 2021?
That's good. Well, you know, this, so, we asked for the money actually a year ago.
A year ago.
But we're here now because it took not long to get here. So, we, we, you know, it's, and I will tell you, it's really difficult to run the organization without knowing what funds we have. And funds promised are not the same as checks cashed. So, we have just been trying to play by the game that we've been, the cards we've been dealt. And so, you know, we've made assumptions that we were going to have this money for sure. That's all factored into the planning that we've done for just the first half of the year. So, in some ways, we're here to say thank you for that money and ask for some money again next year and more if you can. I mean, it's really, we, we have to plan out our communications as far in advance as we can. And so, last year, obviously, we stopped it all, but we were on line to spend well over $100,000 last year in media and then did not. Spent somewhere around $35,000 for social. And so, the, the more we know what we've got in our bank account, the more we can plan. And so, I guess that's everybody.
I think one of our projects would be to come up with a formula. A lot of counties, you know, I mean, most counties have this sort of relationship, you know, you have the county, then you've got the marketing organization. And a lot of them have just set up a formula. So, every year, it's pretty much automatic, you know, some percentage of TOT, some, something that is just acknowledges that the, the entity is, is doing the marketing that otherwise would be done, you know, by the county. So, we can make some proposals and get back to you and maybe tell you what some other counties have done. And I assume that would make your job easier as well as ours in terms of not having to deal with annual requests.
And so, you're, you're actually hitting on, on my thought is how can you as an, as a group function when your deadline is June 30th, 2021? I'd love to see an extension to 2022, an extension to 2023. That way, you can predict what your future processes will be. Right now, if you could only predict till June, it, it's tough to plan that out because marketing expands much further than just through June 30th, especially June 30th is right in the middle of the height of when we're expecting people to come through. I, I guess I do have a tiny bit of a problem in wanting to expand that because I, I want to have that discussion with the board to see if it's possible to expand that. But I also, in your agreement, it's very broad as far as what the scope of what the money is for. Is it possible to get a little bit more of a fine-tuned budget of what you need for social media, what you need for specific types of marketing and specific types of materials where then we can look at, this is your three-year budget that you'd like to see maybe 78,000 times three and, and make that possible? If, if there was a budget attached to that, I'd feel a lot more comfortable doing a three-year than a one-year and not sure if we're looking to just approve what we have here today and you come back for the extension or if you just want to come back with that. And again, it's all based on if the board agrees that that's a direction to go. Because I want to see you succeed and success is not going to happen by and success is not going to happen by June 30th. It's, it's about the long-term process and dedication. Thank you for the work that you do to make this happen. And while you're volunteers, and I don't mean this in a negative way, you're benefiting in some way, shape or form because the idea is for you to become more successful by having more beds, heads and beds. And on us, I would typically feel uncomfortable providing money for a private industry to be more successful. But we regain something in return as well through the TOT. And so everybody benefits by working together and playing together. I have a side question for our CAO. Where is the funding? I don't see that it's necessarily specified in here. Where does the funding of the 78,000 come from? Is that coming from our TOT directly?
It comes from our marketing budget, which is budget unit 1892. Yes.
And is it possible to discuss a two year or three year with that specific budget? Or would we need to think outside of that specific box if we discuss two or three years?
What staff is recommending today is that you approve this contract for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then we're happy to meet with TID officials about their needs for future years.
Do, do we, just rephrase my question. Do we have the funds for two or three years in that bucket right now?
Well, the intention of establishing the TID was to create a revenue stream for these activities. And certainly in the COVID environment, that revenue stream would be dramatically impacted. But we would need to look at that as we go year to year. The county has been by far the most significant contributor to this effort. The county put forward the funds to establish the TID in the first place. It cost the county about 50,000. Last year, we gave the TID 156,000 for this type of activity that we're talking about today. And, and today, and in the pandemic year, which has impacted their efforts so much, we're proposing to fund them at half that rate since the 78,000. So we would need an opportunity to meet with them offline and look at revenue availability and their needs for future fiscal years.
Okay. And is the long-term plan to eventually slim down your request from county or other agencies because you're seeing an increase in your TID, TOT that you're, that you're receiving?
So I can kind of speak to a little, I'm, we're part of a group of regional counties that market ourselves called the North of Ordinary Group. And it's Del Norte, Mendocino, and Humboldt Counties and Lake. And in Humboldt County, they have an agreement with their TOT, their TID, in that they fund 50 cents on the dollar of all TID collections each year of TOT. Out of the TOT, they, they give 50 cents on the dollar for the TID collections. And so I think that arrangement would probably be the long-term arrangement that we would like to seek. As we will continue and will always be marketing for the county. And we don't ever see our needs really decreasing. It's just going to become a more, it's going to be a more important game to continue to play. And I think, given the importance of tourism on this county, it's an area that we, we will definitely benefit from and all boats will rise.
And I think what we're doing will also encourage other hotels to build and come to Lake County. I mean, when people go out and do these studies about whether they should, you know, build a hotel here, it's, it's hard because occupancy is pretty low. We get calls occasionally and, you know, it's, what we're doing really could bring a lot of industry here that would make our hospitality industry bigger.
Thank you for that. And my last comment just has to deal with the data that you provided us today. I still can't believe how much larger of a piece of the pie the city of Clear Lake is in the, the TID portion of your revenue versus the city of Lakeport. I know when I speak with a lot of the fishing tournaments, they typically are staying mostly around Lakeport, even when they take off from Red Bud Thompson Harbor. They're still coming out from wherever they're staying outside of the Clear Lake area. But obviously, there's a lot of activity happening in those hotels over there and other lodging. So it's good to see, but it's still somewhat surprising.
It's been surprising for us too. We're, 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 you know, we, we just started to see the numbers and we started to compare them. And we've been scratching our heads too. There was a data problem in the original look at the total revenues for TOT. Because anyway, we, we've gone around and around trying to figure it out too. But it just shows you the importance of some of these national chains that Clear Lake has, the Super 8 and the Best Western.
Right.
So it really, again, as you guys search and look for ways to draw industry here, those, those guys tend to, to be pretty, pretty healthy with their franchises. So last year, you, you all did ask, is there anything you could do for us? And I, you're already hopefully signing the check. But I also want to bring your attention to something else. It's a really big, I think a very big potential revenue source for the county on many fronts. And we've had one meeting thus far, and it's something that I learned and I'm learning from being in this group of four other counties, is going after and creating a, increasing remittances from short-term rentals. So STRs are the fastest growing type of accommodations in Lake County, as we know. No hotels are being built. So STRs are the fastest growing area, but they have a very difficult time remitting TOT or TID. And it's because the two platforms, Expedia and Airbnb, don't allow it in our county. But they do in other counties. So it's a tax revenue. It's a tax issue. And it's something that we need to do something about. We're, we're, we're missing a lot of money. A lot just goes uncollected. So that would be an area that, as a county, we need to get smarter about.
And I do know that we worked pretty hard on adding a lot of Airbnbs, I want to say about two years ago. But there may be still some gaps because the internet doesn't always make things very available and apparent as to who's active and who's not.
Yeah. And if you, if you talk with the tax collectors of like Humboldt, that's a very outdated model. Nobody's doing that. People have struck what are called voluntary collection agreements, VCRs, with the two platforms. And they are collecting TOT, TID upon the reservation and then remitting it to the county on a quarterly basis. In Mendocino, Sonoma, Napa, anyway, San Francisco.
San Francisco, sure, yeah.
Monterey. And that doesn't happen here.
But the county has to go to them and.
Yeah, it has to be the tax collector. I was just on a call with Mike Nichols, tax collector up in Humboldt. And he struck a VT, a voluntary collection agreement 2016. And in the first year, I think he said, he saw in the first remittance, there was a 20,000, $27,000 increase in just the very first remittance. And over the years, he said it's probably over a half a million dollars. So there's a lot of money in short-term rentals. And as these houses up here on the lake get sold to people from out of county who want to come up and they're going to, and they're going to rent them other times, it's, it's money we need to collect. Everybody needs to pay their TOT, TID.
Appreciate those comments.
Sure.
Any further comments from the board before we open it up for the public?
Yes, I have a comment on that. Patrick Sullivan was able to be on that call last week. And we had a long conversation with him. There's a lot of pros and cons to weigh. And maybe it's best for us to have that conversation at a TID meeting going forward to kind of figure the best way forward.
Perfect. Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. I don't think I've done that quite yet. Please click on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you're on the Zoom room from a smartphone or a computer, or if you called into the Zoom room, then please dial star nine.
So it does look like we have some hands raised here. The first hand we have raised is from Melissa Fulton. Looks like she is unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Melissa Fulton, CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. To Supervisor Sabatier's comment about diminishing the request from the TID in the future to the county, I couldn't agree with Brian more. They, the county needs to, they have already done a lot, they have already put forth a lot of monetary support to this organization. And I see that as needing to be increased and not just necessarily from the TOT taxes collected. The strides that they were able to make so far, given the last year, are phenomenal. And we actually need to get more of our stakeholders, our accommodations to join this organization. Yes, with increased visitors, the TOT will grow, go up, which means that the TID portion will increase. But from, from my standpoint, the county needs to fully support this organization. It is out there making strides that have not been made in the past, and it promotes the entire county. So I would see the County of Lake as being a, not just a continuing supporter, but there needs to be an increase in the amount of monetary support for this group. I mean, the fact that the social media outreach is phenomenal and given, again, the pandemic, it just seems that the future of the county will be greatly enhanced by the efforts of the TID going forward. So I hope that that will be the mindset of our supervisors because these folks are doing a mountain of work that will benefit not just their stakeholders by any means, but all businesses in Lake County. So this is a ripple effect that will continue to grow. So thank you for your support from the get-go in November of 2018 and the support that you're discussing today. But I seriously encourage you to continue to, continue that support, but also to grow it because it will be a definite win-win for everyone in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Sally Peterson.
Hi, good morning. I'm Sally Peterson. I am a resident of Middletown. And I just wanted to echo some of the same thoughts in listening to the presentation that was given by the TID board. And my, my thanks to the hard work that has been done with, with Little Resource, that they're doing a really great job. And the efforts that have been made is so vital to our community as a whole. It really is going to strengthen our economies in the entire county. And it is so important. I was involved early on when, when this idea came about to create the TID. And looking back on what the system was before, through the marketing department, one of the issues that, that they had was funding. There was never enough funding. So we found a different source using the TOT tax and the, the additional percentage that was approved. So, so there is a revenue stream coming in. It's of course not enough, obviously. But I have to echo the same comments that my hope is that the county will fully support these efforts and that the efforts thus far has been for the entire county as a whole. And, and then, you know, just the support that they need from obviously the tax collector. The comments that were made about the platform and, and getting the revenue from the short-term rentals is very important. And just sharing more data with the TID board is going to be helpful as well. So I really hope that, that board makes those recommendations to the tax collector and that the support is given to this organization. It's, it's so greatly needed for our county and to strengthen the economies where, you know, a lot of, a lot of areas in the county are still trying to recover even from the wildfires. So this is definitely something that is much needed. So thanks so much to the TID board for all of their hard work. And thank you, Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Next, we have phone 6205. I'm guessing those are the last four digits of the number. If you can please give us your full name.
Hi, this is Bart Lovett. I am a resident in the Clear Lake Riviera area on Sota Bay Road. And we see a big influx of whenever there are visiting days, this is where we see it in our area. And before the matter of hosting more tourists in homes occurs, I'm wondering if the matter of fire safety, COVID safety, PSPS safety can be addressed overall for our Lake County visitors. Last year, we had a fire started by cigarette butts being thrown. And what seems so simple can be so dangerous to us. What do we do to let our visitors know what we expect of them and what they can expect of us?
Thank you very much for your comment. And.
Thank you.
I believe that is the last of our public comment. And did anyone have a response to this last public comment that we received? I would say that we need to lead by example and show people how you're supposed to behave when you're in Lake County. And I think we're the best mentors to anyone coming in and that we treat everybody equally, whether you live in Lake County or you come visit Lake County, and that we set the rules and standards to help keep everyone safe and secure. That would be my statement to make on that.
Yeah, we'll just follow up, obviously, is public messaging. And I know that the Risk Reduction Authority, we're going to be doing some local community via events that, you know, talk about that, something we can touch on about visiting Lake County during fire season and everything. So all in coordination to talk about the safety requirements and and other stuff like that that are going on. I think that falls right into the Risk Reduction Authority. I know we're planning on having something in April. Can be a simple conversation that we have for messaging.
Awesome. Thank you for that. So that seems to conclude our public comments for this item. Any further conversation or comments or questions from the board?
Just that I would really like us to, to move forward with the $78,000, but come back sooner than later to further discuss the three-year plan and a budget. So you can prepare and not be struck with from year to year. I think that's something we need to have another agenda item and look at.
We will do that.
Definitely in agreement with that also and making sure the statement remains that when we do get it, that we get the funds to you guys in your account as soon as we can to follow up on that. So.
Perfect. So then looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I approve, I, I make the motion to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Visit Lake County, California for the provision of administrative services in the amount of $78,000 from March 2nd, 21 to June 30th, 2021, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And if we could please get a roll call, Johanna.
Yeah. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, you also have the consensus. I would say please reach out to our admin office when you're ready for those further conversations.
Do it.
So that we can see you back here in front of us to discuss the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the work that you do. All right. That concludes our entire, oh, I'm sorry.
No, thank you for your time and your consideration.
I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you very much. So that concludes our open session agenda items. I do not believe I've missed anything. And so. believe I've missed anything. And so we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to closed session where we have two items. 8.1 is conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9, D2E3, Claim of Earthways, Inc., 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation Title, Health Services Director. And it is 11:22. Let's go ahead and maybe reconvene at 11:32 and take a 10 minute break.
Mr. Chair, we will be leaving the Zoom webinar and, and rejoining into a new Zoom room, which I will send you an invite for while you're in the break.
Perfect. So we'll meet there at 11:32.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.